Good evening. I will call the March 11th, 2014 City Council Meeting to order. Those of you who are watching us on cable TV, WCMS, or the radio station, we appreciate you listening. All those in the audience who are here tonight, we appreciate you attending. This is your city government. This is your chance to say something to the council and have a voice. You may be wondering where the mayor is tonight. We did not have an overthrow, and the mayor is still the mayor. He's out. He had surgery this last week. He hopes to be back for the March 25th meeting of the City Council, but for tonight, as Deputy Mayor Steve Herman, I will be running the meeting. So hopefully, we won't have any bumps in the road, and everything will go along pretty well. After three-plus years in the council, I've been following the procedures pretty closely. I know the council will assist me and staff where needed. So, welcome, and we'll get the meeting started with the call to order by the clerk. The roll call, please.
Clark?
Here.
Fitzgerald?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Allison Osby?
Here.
Peck?
Here.
Herman?
Here.
Tower, present six.
Okay, well, our eyes, we'll have an invocation led by Councilmember Clark, and then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance by the students.
As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to this city. May our decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
All right, if we can have the students come forward. Okay. I briefly talked to them a little bit, so that they aren't any more nervous than I am for running the meeting, but we talked a little bit about the beautiful weather we've had the last couple of days, and spring is right around the corner. So I asked the kids, are they ready for spring and why? So we're going to have them say their name, the school they go to, and why they're hoping spring comes soon.
My name is Dominic Mueller, and I'm from Smith School, and I'm excited for spring because I am sick of just being in the house all the time.
My name is Tilly Freiter, and I go to Smith School, and I can't wait for spring because I can go on my scooter and a lot of other stuff.
My name is Justana Shong, and I go to Jefferson Elementary School, and I'm excited for spring, for the warmness and all the fun we can play outside.
My name is Asha, and I go to Jefferson Elementary, and I'm excited for spring because I can go outside and no coats.
That's a really good idea, and I'm excited for spring because I'm a golfer, so I'm waiting for the golf courses to open up. So, we have a certificate of appreciation for the kids to come in, and we'll give that to them, and then they're more than welcome to head on out. There you go. Let's give the kids a round of applause for coming in. Thank you very much. Okay, we have one public hearing tonight. I will read the resolution three times. If you wish to come forward and make any comments to the resolution, please do so. State your name, your address, and talk strictly on the resolution that's in front of the council. Resolution 14-102, Approval of Final Resolution for Special Assessments, Contract Number 14-05, Paving, Sidewalk, Driveway, and Utilities, Second Local Street Concrete Paving Program, Central City Area. Resolution 14-102, Approval of Final Resolution for Special Assessments, Contract Number 14-05, Paving, Sidewalk, Driveway, and Utilities, Second Local Street Concrete Paving Program, Central City Area. Final and third time, Approval of Final Resolution for Special Assessments, Contract Number 14-05, Paving, Sidewalk, Driveway, and Utilities, Second Local Street Concrete Paving Program, Central City Area. Seeing no one coming forward, I'll bring it back to council for a motion in a second.
So move, second.
Discussion, council. Okay, we'll take a vote. Roll call, please.
Clark?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Currie, six.
Okay, next part of the council agenda is the citizen's statements to council. Citizens are to address the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes. Must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have impact on the city of Oshkosh and the common council, may address it at future meetings. They may only speak once during citizen's statements, and must not include endorsements of any candidates or electioneering. Anybody like to come forward and make a statement to the council? Again, please state your name and your address, please.
Bob Cornell, 548 West Smith. I'm back. Much to your dismay for some of you, but this winter has not been user-friendly for arthritis. Well, I'm being a positive person. I'm glad it's spring. Put on a hat to the president of the Senior Centers Board for a minute and thank those of you who attended our open house in February. We had a great open house. It was very worthwhile. We had many people come in who were not aware of the programs and activities, and I've seen many of those people around there since, so we certainly appreciate that support. However, I'm looking forward to next Monday, where I've got an offer for you that you can't refuse, and the rest of the citizens of Oshkosh. On St. Patrick's Day, we are having a St. Patrick's Day celebration. Being part of the city, obviously, it's alcohol-free, but you can come in at 4:00 for happy hour anyway, because we're having green punch appetizers, and you can listen to Irish music by Shamus Fitzpatrick and the McNally Boys. Now, what's more exciting than that? And starting at 5:00, there will be a dinner of corned beef and cabbage stew, Irish soda bread, dessert, and beverage will be served. You get all of that for only $8 a head if you do it by Friday. If not, at the door, it's $10. So if you can help us out, we certainly look forward to that. But looking down the road a little bit, going into April, April 12th to be exact, the Senior Center is partnering and collaborating with the Parks Department for a breakfast with a bunny. It'll be from 8:00 to 11:00 in the morning. You can eat all the pancakes you want, and I certainly invite all of you, because if I remember right, you'll be onstage that night, so you need something to eat in the morning so you're not so nervous at night. I haven't talked to Mr. Mauer yet, but I was hoping he could talk Mr. Roloff into being the bunny, but we haven't gotten to that far yet.
We sure haven't.
That would be good.
So, the other thing I wanted to run past you, I'm going back to last October, which you have no reason to remember, but you were, you had a discussion and a resolution on parking at the Algoma and the High Street Parking Lot, and I questioned some of the handicap disability parking at that time. And after that discussion, I had gotten a letter from Mr. Strong, who was at-time Transportation Director, and they were having it on the agenda of the Oshkosh Parking Utility Commission on November 13th, and he invited me there to address those concerns with that commission, of which I did. And he had made some suggestions at the time that, for an example, have we got that right?
Yep.
There's four parking spots here on the south end of the High Lot that are handicapped, and one here that's of the Grand Parking Lot, and then on the Algoma Lot, 39 and 44 are handicap parking. My concern was 39 in the winter, depending on the amount of snow, is not always user-friendly. So, part of the discussion was, and his recommendation was, to change on the Algoma Lot to take 39 here and move it up to 43, so you'd have two handicap parkings there in a row. He suggested taking two on the end here of the handicap and moving them up right along High Street and adding one more to the Grand Parking Lot. Now, the commission, I love, because they did much better than he did. They recommended that eliminating these four and making six across the High Street. In fact, they'd have to go to seven, because with expansion for van accessibles, we'd take up an extra spot. So their recommendation was to go to seven there. Forget about the Algoma Lot, except make the move he wanted to make, and take one, two, three, or maybe more on the Grand Parking Lot, because the side door of the Grand is right here, and it's the only accessible entrance into the Grand by ADA standards. And it was passed about a week later. I talked to Mr. Strong, who informed me, because my question was, how soon are you going to do this, obviously? And he said, well, you're going to wait till spring, till the ground is soft, and we can put signs in. I said, okay, that's fine. I can handle that. But a week later, he called me, and he said, I hate to tell you this, but the best-laid plans a man goes straight. He says, after doing the due diligence on a High Street Lot, we can't use those six spaces along High Street, because the grade of the parking lot exceeds the minimum of ADA standards, and that's why they're at the lower end of the lot, where there's not so much of a grade. So I'm hoping that once Mr. Roloff gets the traffic department settled with a full-time manager, and I've spoken to him about this, that we can get back and take a look at that Grand and see if we can't make all those handicap parking, because they are so close to that ADA accessible door. So I want to just keep you on top of that thing and hope if we need any support, I'm confident that you'll be there to support that idea.
Okay, thank you. Maybe Mr. Roloff, with the new Transportation Director coming on board, we can get that put back on their agenda for a discussion item?
Yes, Mr. Cornell will be pleased when I report later on in the meeting, so you can either stick around or wait until the end of the meeting or watch it at home.
Hello, my name's Gary Gray, 815 West Greenwood, Oshkosh. What I want to do tonight is make a few comments on something that was in the City Manager's weekly newsletter of February 28th, and that is the payment of the liability for the Wisconsin Retirement System. In his newsletter, Mr. Roloff mentions that the financial advisor suggested that the city should use state trust funds, and that's not correctly named, roughly the correct name of it, but I was just wondering if there were any other options of refinancing this liability, such as just issuing general operation bonds, which are probably just going to be about 3.5% interest and not 4.25% interest, which is 75 basis points difference. I realize that general obligation bonds have additional expenses, but it doesn't seem like it would eat up the total of 75 basis points. So perhaps using general obligation bonds would be cheaper on the taxpayers in regards to less increase in property taxes or reducing the amount of cuts in operating funds. Or perhaps another option would be to use some of the TIF money, of the terminating TIFs that are going to be coming up soon, to reduce the amount of money that will be needed to borrow to pay off this liability. And I realize that some of the TIF money, let me back up a little bit. Several months ago, I had the long-range planning, I had the long-range finance committee that was mentioned about using some of the TIF money for Regional Economic Development Fund. I think it was something like $500,000. There was also some talk about setting up a local economic development fund, but it seems like there would be some additional money that would be available to be used, and perhaps that additional money could be used to reduce the amount of money needed to be borrowed to pay off this liability. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak at this time? Otherwise, there will be a second time later in the meeting if anyone wishes to come forward. Okay, looks like no one else at this time. We'll go ahead with the consent agenda items. Consent agenda items are those items of routine administrative nature that are voted on by the council in a single roll call vote. Staff recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or common council may request an item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. Approval of bills presented by the Finance Director. Approval of cash report for January 2014. Receipt and filing of common council minutes from February 25th, 2014. Receipt and filing of museum board minutes from January 9th, 2014. Receipt of claim filed with the city's insurance company. Rosemarie Benaric for alleged damages from a sewer backup. Deborah Lane for alleged damages to her vehicle from a water main break. Michael Palmer for alleged damages from a sewer backup. Jennifer and Brian Prezenska for alleged damages from a sewer backup. Lysel Storm for alleged damages from a sewer backup. Resolution 14-103, Award bid for Public Works Contract Number 14-06 to Jim Fisher, Inc., for concrete sidewalks. Resolution 14-104, Award bid for 5.11 tactical series uniforms for fire department. Resolution 14-105, Award bid for four zero-turn riding tractors for Parks Department Cemetery Division. Resolution 14-106, Approval of Engineering Services Agreement, CH2M Hill Engineers, Inc., for assistance with implementation of the wastewater collection system, sewer evaluation capacity assurance plan, and capacity management operation maintenance plan. Resolution 14-107, Accept dedication street right-of-way for Oregon Street adjacent to 2728 Oregon Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. Resolution 14-108, Approve land exchange with University of Wisconsin Oshkosh, West Third Ave, Central Garage Development Project. Plan Commission recommends approval. Resolution 14-109, Approve conditional use permit to construct arm-replaced stormwater detention basin generally located, arm-replaced Kohler Street, Crystal Springs Ave. Plan Commission recommends approval. Resolution 14-110, Authorize police department grants for pedestrian safety enforcement, bicycle safety enforcement. Resolution 14-111, Disallowance of claim by Curtis Young. Resolution 14-112, Disallowance of claim by Brennan Went. Resolution 14-113, Disallowance of claim by Discovery Properties. Resolution 14-114, Approve appointment to the library board. And Resolution 14-115, Approve operator's license, taxi cab driver's license, and second-hand dealer licenses. Anyone from the audience wish to come up, make any comments or statements on anything on the consent agenda? I'll bring it back to council. Anything council would like to have polled or have discussion? Mr. Cummings?
I just have questions on two, Resolutions 14-105 and Resolution 14-106. The first, Resolution 14-105, what are the brand of the riding lawnmowers? Are there zero-turn radius lawnmowers?
Mr. Strom will come forward, representing the Parks Department.
The bid was by Skag Mowers, which is a Wisconsin-based company.
Good, thank you. And then Resolution 14-106, in layman's terms, what is that all about?
This is the first time I've actually heard somebody say what C cap and C mom is, so I appreciate the deputy mayor pointing that out. This goes back to our compliance agreement with the EPA regarding the sewer plant and any type of overflows that may be in the system or backups, that whole issue that we dealt with EPA with last year. These are ongoing plans that we have to submit to the EPA on, I believe, an annual basis. Is that correct, Dave?
Thank you.
Any other? Councilmember Allison Osby, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just had a couple of questions within Item F2, which is the approval of bills by the Finance Director. On page three, I had a question regarding the amount of $4,260 going to the Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce, and then on page, it says one, but it's Advantage Purchasing for the amount of $264,313. If there's anybody that could speak to either one of those two.
I'll go in reverse order. Advantage purchasing is, this is for the Central Garage Project. There's a provision in state law that allows us to purchase the materials directly without having to pay tax on it. Myron Construction has set up a company called Advantage Purchasing, so we purchase the materials from Advantage Purchasing rather than Myron Construction, and the materials out in the yard are technically owned by us the minute they enter the yard, and it's just a way to, we save 5% on all materials we purchase by going through that method.
Okay.
The one for the chamber, I'm suspecting what that's for is our monthly payment to the chamber for the bid. The bid contracts with the chamber for, to manage the bid, and that's typically reimbursement to the chamber for the services of the bid manager.
Okay. And do you know that for sure? Is that something?
No, but that's usually the monthly bill that we pay to the chamber.
Okay.
I'm not aware of any other outstanding bill that we have with the chamber at this point.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions? I just have a couple. If Chief Franz could come forward for a minute, please. Thanks, Chief. Under Resolution 14-104, the tactical series uniforms, let me just give us a little background on what are, is that the day-to-day uniform, or is that what the firefighters use when they combat fires?
Those are day-to-day uniforms that they wear. It's polo shirts, pants, and t-shirts.
Okay, and we purchase them for them, or do they have like a clothing allowance, and they get them out of that, and you just get a bid with the best pricing, and then they get them from?
We actually operate a clothing commissary, so they aren't given the purchasing allowance to purchase uniforms. We actually provide them for them and replace them as needed when they're worn or damaged.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
And then Chief Royals in the back, I just want to ask him a question on his grants. Thanks, Chief. This would be on, let's see here, Resolution 14-110. First off, congratulations on getting the grants. The pedestrian safety, what area of the city are we looking at? Is this dealing with the roundabout issues and?
It'll be all different locations that we've identified as problematic areas, where there have been crashes with pedestrians, roundabouts included, downtown crossings have been problematic. So we'll focus our energy in the areas that we've seen problems at.
Okay, it talks about safety enforcement. Is there also the opportunity to purchase more of those signs that say Yield, you know, that we put out in the streets?
Not with this grant. It's not an equipment grant. This is for enforcement overtime only.
Okay, and are we going to be sending out a notice, a little bit FYI, to the community that you will be out there in certain times and?
Possibly. We try and do that for some, but not for all.
Okay. And then on the bicycle safety enforcement, just a little background on what your plans are with that grant?
Yeah, same thing. We're going to concentrate our efforts where we've seen crashes involving bikes, but also where bikes are more popular, along the trails, the riverfront, university area, where we see a lot of the bicycle traffic. We'll be doing enforcement and education on bike rules.
You're pretty much figuring your bike enforcement officers will be the ones participating with this one?
For the most part, yes, although motorized enforcement seems to work pretty good, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all I have. Anybody else? Thank you. Any other questions? Anything anybody wants polled, separate item? Okay, I guess I'll...
I'll move the consent agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved in second. Roll call vote, please.
Clark?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Currie, six.
Okay. We'll move forward to new resolutions. This is Resolution 14-116, Approve assignment of lease with WIDA and contingent amendment of the development agreement with Marion Road Apartments LLC, Rivers Two Development. The redevelopment authority recommends approval. Entertained...
So move.
Second.
Okay, bring it back for discussion. It's been moved in second. Mr. Davis?
Mr. Davis is already here.
There, and he's got some information he wants to talk to us about.
Always ready to answer questions, but I can give you a synopsis of what's on the agenda tonight. Through the process of the Rivers Two project, we had worked with the developer and WIDA to develop the financing for the program. If you recall, we also got a grant from WDC to help clean up that site, and the city is putting money into the project to clean up that site. As it turns out, WIDA didn't like some of the development agreement language that we had regarding the indemnification, and unfortunately, we had used that in the Rivers One project, but now they have a new council, and they wanted a legal council, and they wanted to alter that. And if you start getting too technical with the questions regarding the indemnification clause, I'd have to turn it over to Attorney Laurinson.
Okay. For those in the audience and those that might be listening on TV or radio, what is WIDA? What's its standard?
Oh, Wisconsin Housing and Economic Development Authority. They are financing the $7.5 million loan for the private development.
And I know in your documentation that you sent to council, there was clarification on the liability side to the city. Can you just get a little more clarification on how does that pertain and what exposure of liability would we have if there was any defaulting in the property?
How about I handle that one?
Okay, that's a more legal question.
Really, the risks that we're talking about in this case are the risks associated with third-party claims. So this would be something that the city might be drawn into simply because we're the property owner, because of the way that this is structured and because of the environmental issues associated with that property. We cannot simply just sell it to the developer. The environmental remediation is going to be ongoing while the construction is going on. So we remain the property owner during that period, and just by virtue of the fact that we're the property owner, the city could get pulled into claims from some third party who's injured or might have property damage, that type of thing. The developer in the agreement is indemnifying the city, so we're saying, you have control over this, and if you do something and we get sued, they would pay for the city's costs or losses, or, you know, they would hold us harmless and indemnify the city for that. The only case that this becomes important is if the developer fails or steps back from the project, WIDA takes over. So you'd have to have two conditions. There'd have to be a loss, a third-party loss, and WIDA would have to step in and take over. And then WIDA is saying, we'll accept some of that risk, but not all of it. Specifically, what they carved out is if there's any costs associated with experts or professionals, attorney's fees, that's the cost that they don't want to indemnify the city for. So the one other thing I'd note is because we're assuming that by contract, the city's insurance would not cover that loss for us, so there is a potential risk there. The RDA had a very good discussion about it. They really weighed the risks involved, and again, you would need kind of two things to happen. There would have to be that loss, and the developer would have had to have stepped back, and WIDA would have to take over the project. and WIDA would have to take over the project. So they looked at that and did still accept, recommend accepting the WIDA terms. I don't know if there's any other questions or I think.
Any else? Any other questions?
Just another question for Alan. But this is, and this is really for the clarification of some other developers in the community that had some issues with this project. But this is, this agreement with WIDA, between WIDA and the developers, for a loan and not for a grant.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the only grant that is associated with this project is for the environmental remediation. And so that's, and again, that's why the city attorney pointed out that we still have to own the underlying property until the project's all cleaned up and all finished. Then finally, it turns over. But for that moment of time that we continue to own the property, we expose ourselves to a slight level of risk. The RDA felt that it was not a big enough risk that we should walk away from this deal. They felt it was appropriate.
And I guess that is one thing. In the memo that I don't think was mentioned, the RDA did look at, it is a risk that does come to an end because there is a point where we will convey that property and any claims would have to be filed within the period we owned it. And that, once we're out, we're out, so.
And do we have a timeline of how long that is? Two years, three years?
It's only during the, well, the construction period would begin this spring. They expect to have it open again about a year from now for actual letting. And the goofy thing about the site is the remediation actually takes the improvements for the roof or the parking lot, the landscaping. We need that for the cap, so it actually has to be constructed for us to be able to sell it. It's kind of goofy that way. But then DNR will say, yes, you've met the requirements for remediating that site. Then they'll give us a certificate of completion, and then we can actually convey it to the property owner. And then that property owner doesn't have any liability for those remediation liabilities that might have existed.
So about a year to 15 months is probably what we would expect. As far as the length of time, from the time that work starts until the project ribbon cutting, people start moving in, then we're going to convey the property over to them and then our liability will be gone. Once the DNR signs off on it, we're.
Then we convey as quickly as possible.
Okay. Mr. Councilmember, go ahead.
And the estimated assessable value of this project will be?
There's a guarantee of $5.2 million.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Davis or attorney Lorenson?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I guess it's already, a motion's been put forward and seconded, so I guess we'll go to a roll call vote.
Clark?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Kerry Six.
Okay, we have one more new resolution. It's Resolution 14-117. Oppose Senate Bill 632, Assembly Bill 816, preempting municipal authority to regulate non-conforming, non-metallic mining operations and burrow pits associated with DOT construction projects. Plan Commission recommends approval.
So moved?
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Clark?
While this version of the bill is significantly better than it was when we had the discussion and voted on opposing this bill in the fall, this bill is also known as the frac sand mining bill. The water language has been taken out of it, but some of the language has actually broadened in scope. So this would basically say if the DOT wants to create a burrow pit, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Roloff here, that the city has no authority to regulate where it goes or what goes into it. So it would completely remove our authority on that. And taking this directly to our example here in the city, right now, if the mine over on the south side wished to expand their operation, the footprint of their operations, they would have to go through a conditional use permit process and through our zoning ordinances. This bill would remove that authority. So that mine would be able to expand unregulated within the borders of the property. So the city would not be able to represent our citizens in negotiations and as a forum with that business. So it would severely limit our ability to control any mining operations in our city and the burrow pit. So this is still a major overstepping of home rule powers that have been granted to the city.
Okay. Mr. Cummings?
Mr. Clark is exactly right. This is another attempt by Madison to take away home rule from local communities. And to quote a sentence from the memo from Director of Planning Services, Burish, "As was previously the case, the legislation is alarming to city staff in regards to its impact on local land use, planning, and zoning." So this is, again, it's had one more attempt to Madison to interfere and meddle in how we conduct business within our own city.
I know the council is aware that periodically neighbors around the quarry make some comments and, you know, we hear they're going to do this, we hear they're going to do that. And we've made assurances based on existing law that if there was any expansion, that would have to come to the council. This would essentially undermine that authority that we've represented to the public, appropriately we have, but it would really take that authority away. And that's disturbing. And then, as councillor Clark pointed out, this is commonly referred to as the frac sand mining bill. It's very overreaching in its authority. We don't have a heck of a lot of sand, except that the infill that are ball diamonds, and that's about it. Why we got dragged into this is literally, it's just overly broad, as councillor Clark and Cummings have pointed out. So that's why I think Mr. Burridge referred to it as SB 349 light, but it's still not acceptable from our standpoint.
Go ahead.
Assuming we approve this tonight, what is the next step?
We will, number one, we'll forward it to our local state representatives to let them know of the council's position on it. Similarly, we'll send it to the members of the committees in the senate and assembly that are, that are looking at this bill, although it's making, it's been making its way through. I am a little optimistic. It sounds like it may be losing some traction, but you know what? I'm not going to tell you that. I want you to vote for this thing or, you know, to be opposed to it because we need to send that message. But it appears as though it's losing traction, and we hope so, but you just never know.
I assume other communities are doing something similar to what we're doing tonight? Or have done?
Not everybody does it. Some communities are. The League of Wisconsin Municipalities has gone on record against it. We're following their lead to a certain degree. As of two weeks ago, the Wisconsin Towns Association had gone from being against it to neutral, but then some of their members who are looking at it like our council is, started to call the towns association and said, this still isn't very good. And I think they're following what councillor Clark talked about. So the towns association has gone back again, and they are also against it. So you've got a combination of both urban and rural advocacy groups, both against this, and I think that spells a lot of opposition for it.
And just as a kind of addendum to that, the reason the bill was changed in the first place is because the number of communities and organizations spoke up and said, no, this is not okay. So the bill was changed in the first round because we spoke up, and this would be another step to hope for more change in that process. Because we spoke up once and they said, okay, we'll take a look at it, and this would be another call for attention to say, hey, let's look at this some more.
Just a question, Mr. Davis, maybe you can answer. How, or is there possibly that this could affect any of our economic development going forward? I mean, could they end up building something in an area that we have targeted for development for something else?
Absolutely. I mean, depending on where a project, burrow pit gets located, you could excavate that, all that material, and we could have it planned for residential, or we could have it planned for industrial. It really doesn't matter to them.
And so if they want to build or put a mine, whatever, they don't have to come in front of us, period?
That's what it's proposed for DOT projects.
I can give you a specific example from past experiences. There have been areas where the DOT has taken away dirt because a landowner is willing to sell it to them. From an economic development standpoint, you could find that property being very difficult to develop because they've taken away so much dirt. The only way it can get developed is to put, fill back because it's too low, and essentially you're actually spending more money. So what happens is it becomes an unusable piece of property, and then it sits on the sideline even as development may occur around it, and it becomes somewhat of an eyesore. And I think the concern that staff had was on the north side in the area of County Y. Wasn't that one of the areas that the DOT was looking at using? And that is an area that has potential to grow from a residential standpoint, and it could actually hurt us. We would want to be able to have some say in, is this in the best interest of the city as we want to make that residential area? Certainly, houses aren't getting built in a lot right now, but down the road, we could actually find ourselves with a somewhat of an economic development housing albatross because nobody will want to touch it.
Okay.
You know, I.
Go ahead.
You know, I would agree with councillor Clark and councillor Cummings, but I'd also like to read further that this legislation, quote, "circumvents a municipality's local expertise in dealing with the unique land use issues that the legislature or the state bureaucracy is not equipped, is not better equipped to analyze than the people of the city of Oshkosh or Winnebago County and its towns." You know, I think it's been said tonight, I know I've said this before, a word, two words that are thrown around in Madison many times are local control and, we're doing this for local control. Well, this is not doing this for local control. This is nothing more than a power grab by the special interests in Madison that are writing this bill. These are not legislators that are writing this bill. It's special interests that are, have proposed this legislation and are having their work done for them by our elected leaders instead of listening to their constituents as we do on this council and protecting their constituents. They're kowtowing to the special interests.
Any other comments or questions? All right, it's been moved and seconded already. We'll take a roll call vote on Resolution 14-117.
Clark?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Kerry Six?
Okay, we'll move to aye on the agenda. Council discussion, direction of city manager, and future agenda items. First one on there is follow-up on special events, which is me. Everybody got copies of the memo that came out that dealt with our follow-up of the special events from the February 2014 workshop? Does anybody have any questions or anything that you'd like to see addressed with that? Back to staff before the workshop on the May 13 scheduled workshop? Or do you think, do we even need that at this time? I know I'm jumping a hair ahead, but we'll get to that and make a final decision. But are there concerns or things that you think needs to be addressed separately, or they can move ahead forward and bring something back to council to vote on any changes to the special events?
I had an impression that staff did an extremely thorough job in terms of taking the concerns that citizens and the council had, and I was impressed with what I saw. I really didn't even see much of a need for a further workshop at this point, but I'd certainly be anxious to hear what the rest of the council felt.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mr. Beck, go ahead.
I'd concur. The staff did a tremendous job on this. You know, the city listened to the citizens, you know, and have come forward with these proposals that are going to address the concerns of the citizens. I'm very pleased with what it was. And again, the staff listened, as well as the council has listened to the citizens of Oshkosh related to this and their concerns, so.
I'd be comfortable with things coming forward as resolutions before, I don't even know if we need a workshop, because I think that the job that was done was thorough enough and the recommendations were sound and the rationale I can easily defend as a councillor. So I would be more, I'd be comfortable with having those come forward to council as resolutions, and I don't necessarily see the need for another workshop.
Okay, just for clarification, because it was a workshop and some of those that are out in the audience and those that are listening to us, I'm going to just highlight real briefly, there were four years of concern that were to be addressed. Number one was disruption to businesses' activity, particularly in a downtown area, frequency of overtime and impact on staffing, reviewing fees and establishing a fee for use of public vans, which would be like, you know, we have events in parks and things that aren't renting shelters, aren't renting other facilities. And four was poorly planned events or events which have disproportionate negative impact in relation to potential benefits. And just some of the recommendations, again, it's going to be brought up, there'll be discussion on it, there'll be probably opportunity for the citizens to make comments. I won't go into great detail, but for the first one, recommendation is to provide more and better public notice of events. Propose new ordinance language to specifically address poorly planned or unduly disruptive events, which council has gotten complaints over the years on certain events, community events. Increasing information sharing related to large events and further considering requiring events that require fire or police to complete applications further in advance. Currently, it's 45 days out from the event is the way the ordinance reads. And number four was consider potential fees for use of public facilities and late payments for services, which we've had a few events over the years that have kind of lagged. We don't have kind of a real timeline in there. So those are the four things that really came out of the initial workshop that staff took back after the workshop and discussion with council. And all those that are involved with the review staff. And just to let citizens know that, the review staff is attorney Lorenson, city clerk Pam Eubrig, parks director Ray Mauer, fire chief Tim Franz, police chief Scott Groyle, and assistant director of public works Steve Godey. And they spent a lot, a lot of time, we all know this, and that came out in the workshop too, of putting the special events together for Event City. And we want to make this continue to be the Event City. We want events to come to Oshkosh. We want them to enjoy our community and our, and our citizens to enjoy our community. So the special event policy has been out there for a couple of years, and there was a feel that there was some tweaking that needed to be done, and that's where we're at with this. So that's why it was put on tonight's agenda for discussion and direction. So it sounds like, Mr. Roloff, there is, council's satisfied with what your staff has put together, and I think we can move forward with any changes that would have to be on the legal side of things with the city attorney and your staff. So any comments? Go ahead.
I think we're prepared to present an ordinance. It requires two readings, so.
Correct.
The meeting on March 25th would be the first reading. That's typically where a public hearing is held. And then the second reading would be on April 8th. So, and our intent would be, as we said in the report, that these changes would be effective 1-1 of 15, so we can give plenty of advance notice to any potential special events that these are the new rules that'll apply. So that's another feature. I think the council has talked about that in the past.
Any comments from those that are part of the review process? Give you a chance to speak on it.
I thought I said enough.
Okay, you did, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move to 23 under there. Future agenda items. Workshop on neighbor works, April 22nd.
That's all. We've got that planned. The council for the new year will be seated, so this will be a good overview for the council to start the new year.
Okay. And then B on that was workshop to discuss special event policy.
Seems like a moot point.
Kind of, yeah, it seems like a moot point. But at the same time, are there, are there any other workshops? Or we'll have a new council seated by then, but of any ideas or things that council may want to?
I know there's a workshop that staff talked about. We'll either put it in the newsletter or on the next agenda so that we start thinking. So keep May 13th on your calendar still, even though we don't have a specific topic yet.
Any hints or clues, Mr. Roloff?
No, I'm clueless, so it's not, I'm not, I'm not being.
We're having a workshop on being clueless.
I wasn't sure if this was something so good, it was suspenseful.
We do well on that. We do well on that.
Please don't touch that.
I'll just let that one go.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Peck.
Okay. All right, all right, all right. That takes care of Council Discussion Direction to City Manager. Uh, this is the second time for citizen statements to council. If anyone that did not speak the first time around would like to come forward, again, address the council only, statements are limited to five minutes, must address items not on the council agenda, limit to issues that have impact of the city and the common council may address in future meetings, and must not include endorsements or electioneering. Please state your name and address. And we have this Deener up here.
My name is Patricia Deener. Live at 1316 Broad. I'd like to thank Public Works for coming out to, over on Levin Street. My father and I was kind of concerned about the water and the freezing and they worked hard yesterday, tried to open stuff. That sure helps him a lot. And I want to thank the sanitation. Uh, my husband and I did put in for them to automatic do our garbage. I do appreciate it. They are so great doing it.
All right, thank you. Kudos to Mr. Potek and his staff. All right, we'll move on to City Manager Announcements and Statements. State of the City, March 31st. Mr. Roloff?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Herman. Uh, just another reminder, State of the City is Monday, March 31st. Doors open at 6:00. Presentation starts at 6:30. I think, uh, most of the council members have completed their video portion, some more comfortably than others, but I appreciate everybody working with that. I do have one other announcement. Uh, on March 31st, will be the first day of work for our new Transportation Director. So I'll put Mr. Cornell's wishlist together for him. It's actually a resident, a current resident of Oshkosh. His name's Jim Collins. He currently is Director of Operations for Dunham Express in Nina. Um, he's a UWO grad, both his bachelor's and master's degree. Impressed us a great deal with his knowledge of transportation logistics regardless of public or private sector. So very impressed with his, uh, his background and his references and we're looking forward to having him join the staff. And his first day of work will be a long one because it's the 31st and I already told him he's sticking around for State of the City. So everybody will have an opportunity to, to meet him on that time. I've got a two for today. Uh, we also have filled the position of Finance Director. Ms. Trina Larson is currently the Administrative Coordinator and Director of Finance for Adams County. Uh, she previously worked for the city of Black River Falls, so she has both city and county experience. Ms. Larson has a bachelor business degree from Viterbo University in La Crosse and she'll be joining us on April 7th, but I twisted her arm a little bit and I think she's going to be able to join us for State of the City so we can introduce her as well. We're keeping our fingers crossed with that. So, uh, she'll be relocating sometime in the summer. She has some kids that need to finish the school year, but, um, April 7th she'll be starting with us. And, um, I heard a huge sigh of relief from over on Dempsey Trail as well as the first floor when I made that announcement yesterday. So we're happy to have, uh, both Mr. Collins and Ms. Larson join our staff.
And State of the City is at the convention center, correct?
Yes, it is. Thank you. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Uh, just one comment. I just want to thank on behalf of the council, um, Mr. Vicman for stepping in at the Transit Department and, and he'll be there yet until our new director starts. That, that's a big adjustment for all the things he does. And Mr. Noakes for coming back and helping the city out. I hope that we send him a letter of thank you or something, appreciation, maybe, maybe in Mr. Noakes's case, he gets another clock or a watch or something. I, I'm not sure what, what retired employees for the city get, but.
Leaving is his greatest satisfaction.
Times two, right? Okay.
Times two.
Mr. Cummings?
I just have one thing to say and remind citizens of Oshkosh and, uh, that on Saturday, the St. Patrick's Day Parade will be held on Main Street, on North Main Street, beginning around, I believe, 6:00 in the evening. So it should be, Mr. Fitzgerald's got the tie on that made me remember that.
It's Saturday.
So everyone, uh, plan to attend the parade.
Ms. Allison Osby?
Um, just as far as regarding the staff, I think we also have to note Ms. Tara, our, Tara?
Tara Went, yes.
Tara Went, um, in the Finance Department because obviously she's full-time and this was a discussion that Mr. Roloff and I have had and she has certainly stepped up and taken on an enormous amount of responsibility in not exactly the most convenient time of year. So I think she should be recognized as well.
Absolutely, yeah. And Tara's really stepped up big time. So thank you for, for mentioning Tara as well.
All right. Um, I'm going to refer to Mr. Cummings for a motion to go into closed session.
I move that following the adjournment of this meeting that the council convene into closed session to discuss bargaining strategy, options, and parameters related to the negotiation of agreements with the Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce pertaining to the commercial development of the Universal Business Park and with Chamco Inc. pertaining to the industrial development within the city's industrial parks. And to discuss bargaining strategy, options, and parameters related to the negotiation of a development agreement for a possible economic development project proposed for Aviation Plaza, the former Walnight Walmart South Site, South Kohler Street, all pursuant to Section 19.85, 1/PRIN-C of the Wisconsin State Statutes where competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session.
Second.
Seconded on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll meet in 10 minutes, a closed session, Mr. Roloff's office, I believe. I didn't hear a room number, so I take it it's his office.
All right, thank you. Thanks for those who are in attendance.